Steve, whenever you're ready, let me know.
Good evening, everyone. I will call the May 9, 2022, meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order. I will announce that the board did meet in an executive session. We had, we discussed three legal issues and one personnel matter. And with that, Mr. Neese, can you please do a roll call?
Mr. Altieri.
Here.
Ms. Roberts-Lightcap.
Here.
Mr. Partridge.
Here.
Mr. Russo.
Here.
Ms. Chanlis.
Here.
Your special counsel, engineer, and manager are here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Neese. We will now move to the moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. For this evening's moment of silence, it goes without saying that Newtown Township over the last week has lost a massive pillar of our community. And nowhere do you feel that any more present than in this very room this evening. Joe Catania was a mentor, a colleague, and a friend to all of us. And his loss is one that will be felt throughout this community, not just in the days and weeks and months ahead, but for years to come. But what we are all fortunate is that we were able to have the ability to work with someone who, like no one else, had the ability to light up a room, who was able to take a complex legal issue and translate it into a simplistic form for us to understand, but more importantly, to ensure that it was benefiting the township. You know, there was something that was said at the, at his services that, big or small, he always did what was right. And we are fortunate that, over the years that we worked with him, that motto bled into us and is now part of our DNA. And we have been since working with him and, and will continue to continue to do what is right for this community and to live up to that legacy that is Joe Catania. So I ask everyone to remember Joe Catania and his family in this evening's moment of silence. And we'll stand for this one, actually. Now we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, now we'll move down to the approval of the agenda 5.1. Can I get a motion to consider approving the agenda as presented?
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts-Lightcap, seconded by Supervisor Russo. Was there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We'll now move down to Agenda Item 6, public comment for Agenda Items only. I have been informed that there was nothing in the Dropbox, nor was there anything in the Township email box, or excuse me, the public comment email box. Any members of the public have anything they wish to say? Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Let the record reflect that there is no public comment. We'll move down to Section 6, excuse me, Section 7, 7.1. Can I get a motion to consider approving the minutes from the April 28, 2022 meeting?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Chanlis, I think it was, excuse me, Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We'll now move down to Resolutions of Recognition, 8.1. Consider approving the Resolution 2022-20, National Public Works Week. Supervisor Russo.
Whereas public works, infrastructure, facilities, services are vital to new, are vital importance to health and safety and well-being of the people of Newtown Township. And whereas infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of the public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it's a public interest for citizens, civic leaders, and children in Newtown Township to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2022 marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association slash Canadian Public Works Association. Vietnam resolved the designated week of May 15 through the 22nd, 2022, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with respect, with representatives of the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, and government agencies, and activities, events, and ceremonies designated to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protect our national health, safety, and quality of life. Adopted this 9th day of May, 2022.
Motion was made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We'll now move down to Reports, 9.1. Report from the Township Manager, Mr. Neese.
Yes, I have just a couple of things. The first is the summer help. We've, George has been busy looking for some folks to help him this summer, and he's found three. Two will be helping kind of on the day-to-day, just like you're used to seeing what he does in public works. The, the third one, as long as the board's okay, there is a person who has worked with the CRC in the past who would come in and help us primarily related to, you know, potentially some tree inventory, some looking at and evaluating some of the things like how, how our trees on the property are doing and what we might need to do in that area. And then, George, was there anything else that they were going to focus on? That was the main thing. And so that position, we would actually pay a, like, more to, but they would work less hours. And so instead of being here 40 hours a week, like the other positions, I think we're looking at this person being here two days a week. But the compensation would be equal, just would be brought, what it was, it just would be done over a shorter period of time because of their expertise that they're bringing to us. And so I just wanted to make sure you were aware, that's where we were headed. As long as the board's okay, we will move forward with that. The, the second thing that I wanted to share with you, we found out today, just, and this is just information, I'll be signing the document, letting everybody know. Rose Tree School District is looking at putting an elementary school in Edgemont. I think it's on Middletown Road between Gradyville and I think it's Valley Something Road. I can't remember the name of the other road right now, but just so that everybody knows, I'll be signing that, that we're aware of it. That, just as a local municipality, they let us know. And so I just wanted to let everybody know that we're doing that. Those are the two things that I have for you at this time.
Thank you much, Mr. Neese. Is there any questions for the Township Manager? The only thing I will just, and I don't have much information on it now, but I'll be forwarding an email from, to you, Mr. Neese. I guess there's been issues with the county health department and it affecting our vendors for the farmers market. I received an email from Pam Perser, who is one of the, who is, I guess, the chair of the Farmers Market Committee through Gather in the Circle. So far, we have lost three or four vendors because of the way that the county health department has their licenses structured. The one seems like it could be a fix if, you know, I suspect the county did made aware of the issue. It has to do with licensing in the sense that if you are going to five, if you're going to be a vendor at five farmers markets, the way that the county is enforcing it now is that you have to pay a fee for all five farmers markets, as opposed to just one fee. So that's pushing a lot of people away because we are the newest ones, so we don't have a lot of volume just yet. The other issue that they're running into is the home kitchens. If you have a home kitchen, so if you're doing all this stuff at your house, right, you're a small business and you're doing this at your home, apparently the, the codes are extremely strenuous. And so they're losing vendors through that. So she did reach out to us to make sure we were made aware of it because she views it as a concern. I will forward that email off to you and to the solicitor or special counsel, excuse me, and we will, you know, do what we can. But I, I do think that the, the license one is just a conversation with the county. So if everyone wants to take the lead on that one, whether it's, you know, us or, or someone from the township. But I did just want to make sure that the board was made aware of that, but more importantly, that you were made aware of that as well.
Yep.
And I just received that email as I was walking in here. I would have had that conversation with you prior, no problem. Any other questions for the Township Manager? All right, moving down to 10, payments, 10.1. Consider approving pay request number two, final retainage totaling $6,458.20 to KBC Construction LLC for the Glendale Road drainage improvements, as recommended by the Township Engineer. All punch list items have been satisfactorily completed.
I'm moved for approval.
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts-Lightcap. Is there any board discussion? Um, excuse me, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis. Is there any board discussion?
You did anticipate I have a question. Eileen, we know that it's, that this system is working. I mean, we've had a lot of rain of late, and it, it does what it's supposed to do up in Glendale. This was one of the smaller projects that, can you just explain real quick why we did something in a, in a smaller area, I guess?
This was the pilot program for the low-volume road grant.
It's a better term than small.
Yes. Prior to this, the grant opportunities were only available to communities for dirt and gravel roads. But they expanded it and allowed Delaware County to participate by making it eligible for low-volume roads also. And to determine eligibility, George Sharitz from Public Works did a survey to do the traffic counts and demonstrate that it did qualify as low volume. And it was well under the number that would have been the threshold. I think the threshold was like 250. And George maybe counted 10 cars in a, in a day.
And then this was a grant program.
It was a grant program, almost completely funded the program. There was one change order where the township threw in a little bit of money to redirect the discharge pipe, but it is completed. This final payment would start the 12-month maintenance period that's required. So that if there are any lingering issues or things that need to be addressed, we have that time period.
Thank you, Eileen. Thank you, Steve and George, for finding these, the ways that we can at least make little, if we can make some changes and upgrades and using these grants.
The county has encouraged us to reapply.
Yeah.
Because they're, they're happy to have spent the money on something worthwhile.
Great.
And, and we are going to look at another project actually up there on Glendale, the second half, to do that. So we'll be starting that process here very shortly, just taking advantage of the dollars that are available. But we are also, with that count, we may start doing some counts in some other neighborhoods, just to see if we have some other roads that we can take advantage of that on.
That's great because stormwater is a major concern in the township. So if we can make inroads into trying to repair. So thank you very much.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We're now going to get down to Section 11, 11.1. I will make a motion to approve the bills on check register dated May 9, 2022 totaling $479,351.76.
Second.
Motion was made by the Chair, seconded by Supervisor Roberts-Lightcap. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. 11.2, I will make a motion to approve the bills on EFT register dated May 9, 2022 totaling $340.92.
Second.
Motion was made by the Chair, seconded by Supervisor Roberts-Lightcap. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We're now down to Section 12, 12, Land Development Approval, 12.1, BPG Office Building Rendering Phase 2D, which was previously approved, and today is just, or this evening is just the architectural changes only. We have in the audience today, Mr. John Ford, who is already has a microphone. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. I think at the last meeting, I conveyed to you that we were fortunate to sign a 100,000-square-foot tenant, whole building user for the wood-timber office building in Phase 2 of the commercial area. I hope to convey to you who that tenant is in the, in the coming weeks. But it's, it's an arm of a, 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 a large prominent group in Philadelphia that are, would like to establish an innovation hub and a philanthropic organization. You know, we're, we're really excited that they have chosen us. And just to take a step backwards, we presented to you a number of renderings for this building back, I would say, the fourth quarter of 2019, up to March, early March of 2020, when the, when it was approved. The zoning was approved, or the land development was approved. So I, I can pass out to you, I know we're going to pull them up on the screen. I have copies here that I can give you. But maybe it'd be good, I've, our architect is here with us tonight. I have John Schwartz, who's Principal of D2 Architects, and John Picasa, who's the project architect. So I'd like to have John and John come up and kind of walk you through what was previously approved and, and what were the changes we're proposing to the, to the facade now.
I'm sorry, John, before you, before you sit down, before you start your presentation, we've already made one change to this building in height, correct? We approved a change to the height? I thought we did.
Yeah.
Okay. I was mistaken then.
I think I talked to you one time.
The microphone, I'm sorry. Not tired. Just because of the camera.
Yeah, sure. I, I think I talked to you one time about they, one of their requests was to build an auditorium.
Okay.
And it was on upper levels that we thought might, but they decided to do it on the lower floors.
I just wanted to be sure that we had all the, you know, I had all the information. So thank you.
Sure.
I remember that now, too. Thank you.
Good evening. John Schwartz with D2 Groups Architects. Are we going to have the images up on the screen? How about one of the, the renderings? Could be good. These are just the flat elevations. But of the exist, of the, the original building first, please. Sure. Yeah, yeah, any, any one of them. Great. We're good? Okay, good. So I'm going to start with the original bill.
Steve, is he good to proceed? Are you guys doing something? Is he good to go? He's good to go.
Great, thank you. So I'll start with the original building design. When we first were hired by Equus to take a look at this, this building. Number one, we were, it was going to be mass timber from the start of the project, for many reasons, sustainable being probably one of the biggest reasons why we were going with a mass timber construction type. But the integrating the building, the building was originally going to be a spec office building. So the intent was to design the building and hopefully attract tenants once they see the beauty of the mass timber structure. So the building was designed, I would say, in a more modest, traditional design style, which, but still elegant and in its design, but maybe tailored a little bit more towards multifamily type of residential-ish office building, punched windows, rhythms. We broke up the facade a little bit, so it wasn't as monolithic, but still created enough fenestration in the building so that you'd be able to see through to the beauty of the wood behind it. This is the view, the, the building has always also been designed as a four-sided building. There is no front, there is no back. This is the main entrance of the building, which is on the parking lot side. The materials that we were proposing here were more of a brick veneer facade of different tones and different colors to create a little bit of contrast in the building and composition. The main entrance is on the, from the parking garage side or parking lot side in the lower left-hand corner into the lobby. The building's an offset core, so the, on the, in the middle of the building on this facade is where the stair tower elevator restrooms are. But we have opened up between some of those pieces to put some fenestration for people to view in the stair towers. So it still has a nice open feel. And you could go to the next view. Maybe go to the street, the street view. Okay, so this is the main intersection at the corner. We raised up the corner. We created a more of a retail-type frontage at the corner, thinking that it could be either retail or it could be the, the reception lobby of a, a corporate headquarters that might take the entire building. And then also worked with streetscape and, you know, similar facade, similar materials all the way around the building. So project was designed, ready to go out and get started, and then the pandemic hit. And then I'm thinking it was a few months ago, we were, Equus reached out to us and had a tenant who was interested in the building. They were interested in mass timber. They were interested in an innovation hub, but they weren't interested in the facade of the building. So we had a meeting with the client. We were hired directly through Equus to meet with them and understand what they were looking for and the type of building that they were looking for and changes of the facade so that they could feel as good about entering into agreement to move forward with the building on the outside as well as the inside. When we met with them, they showed us, we asked them to bring some examples, and we brought some examples, and we had a visioning session with them. What came out of that visioning session was a lot of images that were about innovation. A lot of the images that they brought into the meeting were from Harvard, MIT, Stanford. So they're looking for a building that is like, of like the innovation-type hub buildings and facades that the outside of the building exudes innovation as much as the inside and what's going to be happening inside. And that's what they tasked us with, is to create that kind of feel on the outside of the building so that they would feel comfortable about signing a lease and moving forward before we got into really full design development. So with that, if we can.
Before you jump to that, do you have, like, orient us where this is? Yeah, thank you. Do you have a, do you, I'm guessing you don't have a sleep plan, do you?
I'm not sure.
John, you're going to get a mic on or something.
This imagery you're looking at right here would be facing the hotel. The hotel would be directly across from this.
Okay.
On the.
The new hotel.
The new hotel.
And what's next to that? Like, is that where, is that?
So, so there'd be the hotel.
Yeah.
And.
Winding Way.
Winding Way would be behind this.
Winding Way's behind us. Okay.
Yeah.
So this, this is facing. Do we have a plan that we can pull up? Just of the, the zoning plan, just, because I think this is important of, about, you know, the location of this. Because I believe this is kind of in this, where the tran, I believe this is where the transition happens from the retail into the residential.
Yeah, it does. There's a, the parking deck extends out and then.
And there's an elevation change there, too, right? Is that where the elevation begins to change?
This five-story building sits on a three-story deck. You see the big hole that's out there today, long winding way? That's going to be filled in by the parking deck.
Okay.
So, so if the one image you see on the backside where you saw the parking lot, that is the top of the parking deck, which is at grade with the rest of the town center. So the, so the parking decks in that hole that exists out there today.
So we have the tall apartment buildings and then this building, the, the height are, that are kind of in the same area? The taller buildings are in the same area there?
The, the apartment building. The the apartment building is back along 252, and then there's the 63 townhouses. And then it transitions into the commercial area.
Okay.
And it transitions with this building on the south side, the hotel on the north side. Then it 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 filters into the tail.
I'm finished, Ed. Thank you.
Just for reference, you know, the the 63 townhomes that are sitting there. So the, for instance, the rooftop of those, that elevation compared to, you know, this this elevation, how's that?
So we're at 70?
We're at 65 to the top of the roof. I'm not sure.
Right, but I mean, I'm not sure about the the contour, the the ground. So, you know, if somebody's on the top of the like closest townhouses to this building.
The grade, the grade's pretty consistent. Ed.
Okay.
So the the finished floor elevation, call it, I mean, it varies, you know, I don't know, 10 feet or whatever it does, but you know, pretty consistent across the site. Because we were ma- we were able to make this whole site balance. And and so in the commercial area, the finished floor elevations, I believe are all pretty consistent.
What's the height here?
65.
65. So those maybe maybe about three floors up, I guess. I'm just trying to.
Yeah, I think the townhouses were I can't remember offhand.
Two or three stories.
They're three stories, so they're probably like 45 feet.
Yeah, probably if they have a peak.
From 10 feet. Or so.
Yeah.
Yeah, just I'm just trying to get an idea, you know, because like you said, there they're fa- that's facing the hotel. That's where the 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 basin is now.
So the back of this image would be facing phase one of the would it would be facing the Hilton Garden Inn.
The back of this other hotel is the firehouse.
Back of this other hotel would be north of that would be Ellis Madison Apartments.
Do you have a site plan on your phone? You can zoom over or anything?
I'm trying to I'm trying to get it up.
So you're saying that this height for a five-story building is 65 feet? There a big parapet on this building? I understand what you're saying. So what is the floor-to-floor height in this building?
First floor is 4. Do you have a microphone? Because there's a lot of people.
First floor to second floor is 14 feet. Every floor above that is 12 foot 10.
Does that meet our photo in that thing?
I'm not asking.
No, I know, but I I didn't, you know, typically a five-story building is not 65 feet tall. Is that what you presented before? Is this the same height as AmeriHealth?
AmeriHealth, what is AmeriHealth?
50 some, isn't it?
I don't have the I don't have the diagram of the height on it. Yeah, so I have to comply to the 65 feet.
I think AmeriHealth.
It's written in the ordinance.
I think AmeriHealth is.
I thought it was 50 some feet in AmeriHealth, but that's what I recall.
Nah. It has to comply.
Yeah.
Whatever whatever the ordinance is.
I'm going to open the website. It's just for context.
And John, while while, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so but the the main entrance, just to orient, the main entrance is facing the Hilton.
Yeah, it's going to face the the main entrance for the building will be facing the new AC Marriott Hotel. There'll be an entrance on the backside of it, too, on top of the parking deck along winding way. But so what we're going to show you tonight is a a
So what 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 pictures, what's facing the hill directly across winding way to Hilton? What's facing the Hilton? Which side of the building?
The backside of this.
The backside of this, so the opposite of.
So this one, right? For this one?
That's it.
Yes.
Ed, this one.
Okay.
Parking lot.
Not too terribly different, other than the curtain wall at the at the first floor level.
And then, John, while they're getting that site plan, these are the only images you have. You don't have anything else from like what it would look like, I guess, street angles if you're walking through the the preserve or anything?
No, I didn't.
I got. Here we go.
So. Yeah, here you go.
We have elevations on this as well.
Just so everybody knows, we we can share this screen, but because I've gone through a computer that's not connected, we're the home people at home can't see this. So if we, as we talk, we just want to make sure we give enough explanations so people at home can understand.
Is there any way of showing both up, both rendering and the site at the same time?
Not that I'm aware of.
That's fine. All right. So the first the first the first view that we looked at from the parking lot, parking top of the parking deck was from here looking this way, and that's the entrance at the corner. So this is that was this entrance here, and it was a view from here. This is the view to to the entrance where we had the two-story glass. But we were standing on across the corner, pretty much at the end of the plaza here for the retail. Looking back this way, hotels on the left-hand side. This was that front corner that was all glass.
Let's do it.
Yep. Does that make sense?
Of that view? This is the new image of that.
This would be this would be the front of the hotel facing north, facing at the same level, same five-story, five-story office building, five-story hotel.
But John, if I'm standing at the hotel and I'm looking, is the building higher or lower than where I are at the same height that I'm looking? I'm across the street at the Marriott.
It's the same height.
I mean, when I look across, they're the same height.
They're 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 both limited to five stories.
And I don't, I mean, just because of the elevation.
Oh, yes, yes. An elevation standpoint, yeah, they're exactly the same. Where where the elevation changes is when you
Because that's where all the, you know, the the apartment buildings. Apartments look really large. They look looming because of the way they are, you know, and 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 perspective, because you're looking down at them, I think. It makes it seem massive. And so with this, I mean, AmeriHealth looks massive as well, because and I think it's because of the white, and that seemed like that's throwing off is this white siding on the news.
So Tina, the hotels at a finished floor elevation of 416, the finished floor, first floor of the hotel is 416. The retail is at 416, the adjacent high-end steakhouse that we have adjacent to the hotel. The building eight, the freestanding retail restaurant is at elevation 417. So between 416 and 417, everything's the same elevation.
And then across winding way. Am I at the same elevation or is this lower? The finish, the finish floor.
Finish floor. I doesn't have it on here. I don't even I don't even want to guess.
It just feels like a tire on this side. Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to get a perspective.
All right, now that we're oriented, I think we should look at the the new rendering.
The new renderings.
And to be clear, as we go and look at these new renderings, right, John? So there's been no changes with regards to elevation. It's been already approved. This is just purely just the 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 show of it, if you will, the aesthetics.
Just the aesthetics. And you'll take those building plan back to the height against the ordinance requirements are. Against what the ordinance requirements are. I mean, all of that has to comply. We're not we're not asking for any additional height than what's otherwise specified in the ordinance.
So yeah, is this is this whole building curtain wall?
While you're asked about, while we're asked about the height. That that last question was about the height of the building? No, I was asking something else.
My question?
Yeah.
My question was just the the what has been approved already? What we're looking at tonight is not changing any elevations whatsoever. It's just purely aesthetics.
Right. Well, that's what the I guess that's what my question is related to. I don't know what to call this.
The thing, the metal grate.
On the other side, metal grate, what what called a grate? But it's about the height. Because when I look at the Len's question was about the height of the building, and soon soon the height of the building was, you know, 65 feet. Like you said, John, it has to be within code. But when I look at you know, just the obvious picture of the metal grade, not even talking about the aesthetics of it. I'm going to talk about the height of it. So that looks like it comes, you know, fairly significantly higher than the 65 feet of the building.
There's there's two things that are happening. It angle the facade angles a little bit, so it gives a little bit of a forced perspective. And it does rise up a little bit at the top, but it's a parapet. It's not changing the elevation of the roof of the building. The top deck of the building, which defines the building height.
Right, but it but how how far above the building does this facade come? I mean, is it is it 10 feet? Is it 15 feet? Is it 8 feet?
I think it's within four or five feet. It's it's not significant.
Not knowing exactly what the the code says. I mean, code defines building height, but this code also retain, maybe the, I don't know if this question's for for Rich. Yes.
There's plenty of room for unoccupied architectural features.
Can be 27 feet above, for instance, like an antenna or some structure like that. Okay, that's that was my question. Just wanted to just clear that.
Sounds good. So this is the, we'll start at the parking lot view again. Some of the things that we've changed on the building, besides the materials, we've include, we've enhanced the entrance a little bit. They wanted to have the the parking lot entrance the parking lot entrance be as important as the other corner of the building where there will also be an entrance. The view that was up, sorry. The new. Yeah. That's good. Yeah, that's it there. So you could see in the at the entrance, it's curtain wall up two stories and then a curtain wall articulating the corner. And then above that, we have what will be ribbon window, strip window, and then the material on the outside of the cladding is going to be a grid system, either a tiled or metal panel material on the lower right-hand side where it's tannish color, that will probably be a porcelain tile veneer. We go to the other side. That works. So on the ends of the building, the other thing we wanted to do was to break up the building and create more of a dynamic composition of form, open, enclosed, and also materiality. So you see the same materials that you saw on the other one, but just in a different composition to break up the facade and also create more of a dynamic appearance. With the additional glass, one of the things that you'll be able to do is see into the building a little bit more and actually from the outside, be able to see the mass timber more clearly. Did we get the the corner view? You're kind of seeing through the building a little bit.
Oh, are we changing that image? Can we go back to that real quick? So two questions. One, what angle am I looking at?
This is this is directly from the hotel looking
Got it.
Across the street.
Okay, the second thing is is the I'm not an architect, so I don't know what this is called, but what is that material that you have wrapping around the building? What is that called?
You mean you mean the screen?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, so it's a combination of solid metal panel.
Let me, I don't mean, I just meant, is that where you refer to it as a screen? Is that what you guys call it?
Well, we're it it kind of feels like a plane that is hovering above the building, I guess, is the design intent. Create like a lightness of materiality against the mass timber. So there's kind of this.
And is that just for like aesthetics or is there any purpose of that?
Some of it has some purpose because there there will there will most likely be some areas where we have curtain wall behind it, so it will be designed to help with solar gain in some of those cases. In some cases, it's materiality and expression. The other thing is we trying to create the the facade of the building, the lighter we can make the facade, the less weight that we're putting onto a mass timber construction. One of the benefits of using mass timber is it is a lighter material, so you need to you you use less in the foundation, so less amount of concrete we need to use, the better for the environment. So we're trying to create a much lighter skin, both aesthetic aesthetically and weight.
While they're digging that up.
Question mark.
Okay.
So floor-to-floor, where you would hides the drop ceiling in there or the floors that you see the beams?
Yeah, no, you most likely see the beams. There might be some areas.
Is there a steel deck between or is?
The deck, the deck is wood.
It's all wood.
All wood.
So then the great panels you see on the side really don't hide anything. It's just an architectural feature. On the side there to the right of the the left of the porcelain tile and the right of the screen, like where the floors would be.
Oh, the spandrel panels?
Yeah.
Or frigid glass? Yeah.
This is an architectural detail. It's no functionality.
Yes. Okay, so this is the view that we had behind this is the retail area, the plaza. And it's to the front corner that at the lower corner will be a main entrance to the lobby, which will be through lobby for the client. And you're seeing, you know, the composition basically at the corner, and this was one of the views that they wanted to really create some dynamic, a dynamic view, which is why the facade flies by a little bit and can't leave us out.
Are you done with your presentation?
Unless there's any questions, yes.
Well, I'm sure there's going to be questions, but I don't want to start jumping into the everything if there's anything else. If there's anything else you want to show.
No, I don't think there's anything else. But yeah, we could, there there are side view images. If you want to see the composition.
Maybe as well, so the people at home can see them, too.
Do you have any technical questions on the mass timber or sustainable? I also have John, who's got the background in that. By the way, all three of us are John, so.
Nice.
Just to make it easy.
That image right there, the what is that? It looks is that just so next to the flower bed, right to the right of that? What is that? That looks like it goes down some. Is that going to the garage?
From the parking deck. Yeah, yeah, we're on the upper level of the parking deck structure.
Got it. So since we're done with the the images, if you have nothing else to add, just I guess a couple of questions I have. Since this is geared to be like an innovative office hub, are they? Is there any environment outside of I'm guessing like it being lead certified and all that? Is there any other environmental components that are being added to this building to kind of sweeten its placement as an innovative hub? And the reason why I ask it is you have a bunch of people walking around, a bunch of people on bikes. I'm guessing these are obviously not, you know, final final plans, but you don't see anything for people to park their bikes in any of these. I'm guessing the master plan would show that more. But I figured I just asked since, you know, it is an innovative hub, like what are? What do they? I know they want to be innovative inside it, but how's this building being innovative? Just go to the microphone.
Just on.
Microphone.
From outside the building. You know, the PRD has very specific requirements for benches, it has bike racks, it has. And we just went through this on AmeriHealth. We had twenty or thirty extra bike racks. We couldn't even find places that we so all those things outside of the building are built into the the PRD standards. You know, from we can talk about sustainability, we can talk about carbon footprint, we can talk about number other things that this this building provides. They'll talk about, but this is really, you know, we were rushing to the market to be the first in the whole Philadelphia market to have, you know, the first ones to develop a wood. And got us by a couple of months. So they're doing a residential tower. University City right now, but this will be a unique building to urban office. This will be the first wood timber building to hit the suburban office. We can get into, we can provide the township a lot of statistics on sustainability, you know. How many? Give a whole presentation that.
The biggest biggest component of using the mass timber is carbon or carbon dioxide. And statistics are that a building like this, when it's typically made out of steel and concrete, emits a lot more carbon and carbon dioxide into the environment. From start to finish, the production of the steel, production of the concrete, shipment of the steel, the weight of it, everything it takes to get every get it all to the site. Mass timber doesn't have that carbon footprint, if you will. Lighter, easier to ship to the site, easier to mill. And then so that's sort of the front end aspect of it. The back end aspect of it is that a building like this, it's estimated that in two days, the trees that were used to make the building will be grown back. Those are just a couple of the main benefits of the sustainability of it.
Compared to steel. Sorry. It's not a cheaper form of construction than steel. The the upcharge to use wood term wood timber versus steel is almost $2 million. So you know, just want to that could be.
So we're in the early design process, so we're going to be looking at energy modeling on the building. So I don't have the answers for like if we're using any special kind of glass technologies or anything like that. But, you know, the the intent to get to this point was the aesthetics of the building exemplify an innovation hub like you would see in university city or in colleges or universities that are promoting, you know, high tech development.
So is your tenant tied to this architectural rendering? Meaning if we I'm just throwing things out there. If we had if we took issue with, I don't know, anything on here, let's start with the screen. How would that impact this process? And this maybe might be a question for legal. How would that impact this board moving forward with this? I'll tell that actually.
We'll tell you how to impact the project.
What I practice tenant, but I guess in terms of, well, let's get his answer first, and then I'll throw it over to you, Rich.
Well, I yeah, it it's a big impact. I mean, the the CEO is directly involved in all of this. He's building his dream. This, you know, it has two parts to it, you know. Innovation hub part of it and philanthropic part of it to end world poverty or some other things. But it it's it's really his. It's really it's it's his dream. It's you know, he's I wish say more, but he's actually local to the community here. Specifically sought out this location. You know, he wants he wants the ability to be able to design the building the way that he wants to design it. That said, you know, we're here to also ask for your approval to 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 move this forward. You know, it's it's a very difficult environment out there for office. We are very fortunate that there's there's not many deals floating around in the market. There's not many hundred thousand square foot deals floating in the or fifty thousand foot. You know, we were in a competition and we're able to win the business and for for the many things that he offers center offers for employees that he wants to attract and bring here. So it there's it's a long answer to.
No, I got you. So Rich, from a legal perspective, what are we looking at?
Land development process, we typically deal with footprint and public improvements that surround it. Use, whether it's in our zoning ordinances and everything else. This is a little bit unique because it's this PRD. So there was architectural guidelines that were passed along with this process. Through, you know, the the approval of this originally throughout this process, we've built in this kind of process of coming in to advise the board of the way things were going to look to allow the board to have some input into those architectural features to make sure that it's, you know, consistent with what's good for our community. I think the the last time we were here, there was the big dispute but discussion regarding porches or no porches on front of the the townhomes that were being constructed and the benefits with that. And there was a pretty good compromise, I thought, reached in the end where, you know, there was some usable space created to make it more community oriented and not make it, you know, monolithic porch right across the all the things. So I think what, you know, the process where you are now is the developers here to seek your input. You know, I I don't know that it's designed for you to do. It's not designed for the board to become architects and design this. Like what it is is to come in and identify specific areas of concern and enter into a process with with the developer to to make it work.
Got it.
So it's not a vote to approve anything?
I mean, I don't think it's a formal. It's not like a land development resolution, but I think it's always best to have a vote to say, yeah, move forward because then it's there's no question. And when engineers and zoning guys review these things, they want to know that there's approval there for them to move forward. But this is not a, you know, this isn't a, this hasn't been before the planning commission. This isn't the formal subdivision land development process. This isn't a zoning process. This is just a kind of a follow on collaboration after these formal approvals.
I have two. Comment, one comment, one question. The question is not the architectural, but you're saying he's looking to this CEO is doing a philanthropic. Will he? Will this be a nonprofit, not for profit, and just concerned about real estate taxes? That's all. Okay. Um. But we but you did sell to Mainline Health and then they tried to I'm just I'm just concerned about real estate taxes and and the and the tax base, that's all.
Yeah, well, actually. Yeah, I'm not sure what the situation with Mainline Health is, but.
Well, I think well, be that as it may, I think that they tried to.
I think we sold it to LaSalle, which is for profit. LaSalle sold it to Mainline Health.
Right. And you have no control over that, but you do have control over what happens now. And then just my only, I mean, I think that the screen is, I don't mind the screen. What I do mind is that image and all that white. There's no green on the on the property yet. I mean, these trees in fifty years will have trees that'll soften it. AmeriHealth is a pretty stark building, being white. A lot of the elements I like on on the on the building, I like that you're using different materials and on the in the tile. And it's just that straight on image because in in this in the image with the corner, if you can see how it turns the corner. And then your other image that shows it with just that radius makes it really interesting. What is that view from again? Is that from winding way?
No, yes, yes.
That makes it even worse for me, but I mean, it matters on my part. I'm an engineer or an architect, but I do deal with a lot of development and and buildings and I do work with architects. The white is always problematic, but that's just that's just my comment on the on the building, especially from winding way. And there's no green.
What's your what's your timing like in terms of, I mean, obviously, I'm not an architect either. I'd kind of like to be able to walk around and see and I have a hard time even with those little tiny plan out there figuring out where this is in my head. So do we have? I mean, you know, do we have time to kind of walk it and digest it? You're not looking for something immediate like like you can't move forward unless we respond to it.
We we have a further lease and when they want to occupy, we we are under time constraints. So you know, we need the ability. Now sourcing supplies, sourcing materials is it's been a challenge. Supply chain is is taking twice as long. So for us going out to the marketplace, you know, we have to do it that much sooner. So we have to get this designed, get shop drawings done, we get the timber ordered, we have to get the windows ordered, we have to get the 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 metal ordered. Everything's just taking twice as long, so. So our from a scheduling standpoint, we're looking to have all of pretty much the commercials started by October. So all the retail office building, AC Marriott, starting to go vertical, footings, foundations, and so forth. We're in the process now of doing all the horizontal improvements. Getting the stormwater basins done, getting the roads in, getting landscaping done on the exterior. So we're we're going through that right now, leading and will be continuing to do that as we're going vertical. Office buildings in the right. So I'm I'm not sure how much time you're looking for as far as.
I'm just thinking until the next meet. Yeah, sorry. I'm just thinking until the next time we meet or something, you know, rather than having to respond right now because, you know, I just have a hard time.
Take you to winding way and say this is what you receive from here? Well, I mean, I mean, I'm sure if you wanted somebody to show you, it might make it easier.
I mean, you can you can go on the site now. We're going on the site Thursday, but you know, we can a lot of the pad sites are already set. And I'll show you exactly where this office building is going to be in relation to the hotel, in relation to to the to the townhouses.
I mean, I wasn't on any of the boards that approved any of this, so I have a hard time.
I know, I totally, it's been a eighteen year process.
It's it's very difficult to see a plan and then actually see what it looks like. And even if you do it a long time, it's still hard to do. Can I just ask a question just to just to follow up on a couple of things? So I mean, if if somebody wants to tour, you would take them for a tour just to show them what we're talking about here?
Any day, weekend, whatever.
Number two, just to answer this Robert's like caps questions, is that is that white? Is that actually white or is that going to be muted? Is that just a filler right now until it's picked later?
You know, John and I were just we were just talking about this and, you know, it would be you know, the suggestions that that Tina had made are things that we can go back to the tenant with that we can, you know, this is the feedback from the board that we got. You know, try to soften as as you stated that facade. So.
I'm sorry, Mr. Alterga.
Question. As far as soften the facade, you're talking about the grate, right?
Well, I think the grate is the white.
The white, okay.
The white is what I really because that's on the winding way side. And and the starkness of the white, that's the part that bothers me. The grate is kind of it's different.
You're okay with the grate though?
Yeah, I the the idea of it, I guess, maybe not as much of it because it kind of looks a little fancy, a little prison like in in a couple of the it's hard to render it, I understand. On I maybe not as much, maybe a little bit less, but just to kind of touch it up a little bit, but the white is what really stands out at me.
So is the white a a different color or just less of it?
I I think I understand your your comments, and if there's ways we can break that up, I think that's, you know.
Because white never ages well. And and again, AmeriHealth is a beautiful building, but it's white. And and you've done, I mean, the the retail part of of that where Whole Foods is, that's all greened in very nicely. That's really nice and lush. We're not so lush on the other side, and I think the white really makes it it's it's kind of more in your face.
Okay.
So John, are you just looking for some feedback like that or are you looking for?
Yeah, we're we're here to present this to the board and you know, we're you know, again, we're we're trying to satisfy parties.
Right.
And and now if there's specifics that on the facade that would either if there's some things I can get incorporated, that that's certainly my goal to do.
I have a question, John, about ownership. So you sold Mainline Health, you sold the retail, including Whole Foods?
So we we own.
Just the hotel over there.
We own the hotel, a small portion of the retail. There's a majority owner of the retail. We manage the retail.
Okay, but you sold Mainline Health. AmeriHealth you own?
AmeriHealth we own.
But you sold Sunoco portion of the building in the back too, right?
We sold a condo portion of the building.
So we're we're Vanguard's going in. Do you own that or the?
No, Sunoco owns that.
So so.
We
I guess you've sold.
The master association, though.
Right, but you sold some major portions of the of the complex. Now you're telling us this guy's coming in. You won't tell us who it is, number one. Number two, he's philanthropic. Does that mean nonprofit? Does that mean he's looking to put a nonprofit in this building? I mean, that's my concern. I I'm sure you can work out these details where we can we can soften the building to to make it more likable for some folks. But my concern is is if you sell this building and this guy's got a nonprofit, you won't tell us who it is, so we don't know who it is.
I will tell you who it is when I can tell you.
Okay, I know, but what I'm saying is, but you're but you're asking. Okay, I know, but what I'm saying is, but you're, but you're asking us to come here, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm just, my concern is. Whatever is going to get approved at some point this week, next week or two weeks from now. But my concern is tax basis.
We pay a lot of taxes.
Well, no, I know you do, but we just had one of the people.
We could talk about the specifics on.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about that. That's, I'm just going on the record saying that, that's all.
The only thing I'll, I'll add is I agree with everything that Supervisor Roberts-Lightcap said with the white. So whatever we can do to kind of, especially because that is from winding way. I agree with that because when you're coming up, like the one angle, I don't think we ever. Or the prior board ever saw was coming up Westchester Pike from Edgemont. You do see AmeriHealth really just sitting kind of like by itself on a hill up there. The other thing I don't like, and I get it that you're not going to really get a full, unless you're in the hotel. I don't like the screen around the entire front. I just feel like it looks more, and it does look modern, I'll give you that. So innovative, I can see where you're going with on that, but it also feels industrial and like closed off, you know? And I don't know, I, I feel like the, with the screen extending four or five feet higher. From the ceiling, I just feel like it's going to make it look that much more daunting if you're walking on the street. Those are really the only two, I mean, look, the PRD, I asked that question, I suspected that was what the answer is going to be. Is it the PRD will show more with regards to the benches and the bike racks and all that stuff? So that I have no problem with, that, that makes complete sense to me. But, and I do like, the other thing I like too, is I don't, I like how you no longer have what I would call like cupboard windows, right? It doesn't make that building look so boxy with what you have, huge, thank you, covered cubes from what you have now. So those are the only two things that I would say, jumping on with Supervisor Roberts-Lightcap with the white. And then also the screen. Or just my two.
And I agree with what, what Leonard said as far as the screen extending above the building. I, I'd rather see it add building in height, um, and not extending up any further. That, that's the only thing.
Alright, so I guess, I guess what would happen then is. And, and Ms. Chales, do you want a, a tour? Do you want somebody to take you and actually show you?
I mean, I'd like to either look on my own or go with someone, I don't care, but I.
I'll, I'll, I'll contact you and if you want it, we can arrange that. And so can you come back and go back to your folks, see if you can address some of these comments? And we'll see if we can't get a, you know, stand on winding way, stand over by the hotel, say this is where it would go, this is what it would look like from here. Cause it is tough to, I always have a hard time looking from the plan to what reality, so.
John, would your, and I don't, if you don't have an answer to this, this is fair, but would your client be open to us signing non-disclosures? For us to have conversations with them or his agent? Or is that something that you don't feel comfortable approaching with them? I mean, at the end of the day, you have to bring it to him no matter what, I just think it's to address some of the concerns that maybe Supervisor Russo has. And then Supervisor Roberts-Lightcap raised, and I think quite frankly, all of us with potential implications to the tax base. If you would be open to us signing a non-disclosure for us to have, you know, just frank conversations with them before the announcement comes.
So let me, um, yeah, let me just go.
Bring it back to me, yeah. If you just want to coordinate and then just bring that message to Mr. Secor and we can take from there. Alright, so do you need an actual vote for this tonight or you have your marching orders and you're good to go? Thank you very much, gentlemen, I appreciate it. Oh, I should ask actually real quick, is there any members of the public who have questions? Come on up to the podium there, Mr. Rosenthal and state your name and address for the record.
Lewis Rosenthal, 20 Harrison, my comments are, are for the supervisors. Sorry that you guys had to go through that beginning discussion. It was an incomplete package that you were trying to navigate. There wasn't even a request in the public package as what was being looked for. There were some before pictures and after pictures and a transmittal letter to the board. There was no request for a change, um, so it was really unclear what the discussion was about to begin with. I think the wood timber construction is great and, and would strongly encourage supporting that. You're basically being asked to, um, land the tenant. My concern would be and, and, and maybe a concern for you to get comfortable with is that when the tenant walks away. What happens to the design and does the design stick with or without the tenant? As for the change to the aesthetics and the aesthetics were approved upfront. You know, there's new reflective materials. Are there studies about different times of day when the sun is shining? Is it going to hit the eyes of, of motorists or pedestrians? The steel grid structure, does it whistle when the wind hits it? And, and these are not things I just made up. I've lived the wrong side of the answers to these questions and other projects that I've dealt with. Hanging things on the exterior, there is an amount of space that needs to be kept for fire code issues. I know internally we'll probably have fire sprinklers, but externally there are things that I think our fire department would need to. Uh, pass some kind of judgment on. Finally, um, I think you need to think about it now because the CEO of this company who really wants this spot. Is he going to hang a big sign on there? Is he going to ask for that? And is that going to be the one last issue that keeps this lease from getting signed? As for philanthropic issues, my guess is he could probably move in today with the existing design. And still be a not-for-profit at some point in time. So the design element, I don't think is going to be really an issue for the philanthropic thing. So anyhow, those are my comments that I hope the supervisors take. Thank you.
Thank you. You gentlemen want to counter that or just prepare for the next meeting? Sounds good. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Now move down to section 13, new business. 13.1, consider authorizing the staff to obtain a bid from Stan Tech Engineering to design the first phase of the Greer Park Waterway Restoration and Water Feature. To also include stream restoration related to the MS4 plant for Darby Creek. Motion was made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Do you want to add anything, Mr. Neese or Ms. Nelson, or is this pretty self-explanatory?
I, I, I hope it's pretty self-explanatory. The big thing is I just want to make sure that the board understands. We're actually basically putting two projects together, the MS4 project for the Darby Creek side. As well as moving forward with the work. So even though we have a grant just for the, 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 the Greer Park piece. The, this, there will also be a piece of this bid that's greater than that, just so we understand what that looks like.
Got it. Any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. 13.2, consider authorizing the staff and engineer to register the Valley Forge Road Bridge on the National Bridge Registry. Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts-Lightcap. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying, do you have a question, Mr. Partridge? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. 13.3, consider waiving the associated, consider waiving the associated any township fees for the 2022 Farmers Market. Motion was made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor Roberts-Lightcap. Is there any board discussion? Alls in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. 13.4, consider approving the annual renewal fee of $495 for the bright sign agreement. Looping software for the TVs in the lobby, police department and admin lobby.
I'll move for approval.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts-Lightcap. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. 13.5, consider accepting the resignation of Bill Mills from the Newtown Square Branch Rail Trail Committee.
I'll move for approval.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Chanless. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. 13.6, consider authorizing the staff to advertise the open position on Newtown Square Branch Rail Trail Committee on social media and on the township website. Motion was made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor Chanless. Is there any board discussion? I just have one. When is the next meeting that they have for this, Steve?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
When is the next meeting that the branch, the rail trail committee meets? Of May.
There is a, there's a public meeting on the 19th. There is a, uh, meeting with the vendors, the two vendors, I think two days, but the 17th.
Right, the reason why I'm asking is, um. So are they, do they have a set calendar? So they like the fourth Monday, fourth Tuesday?
They are not. They, these were, these, both of these came based on when we got the RFP responses. And so, uh, the 17th is for them to sit through two presentations. From the two, uh, RFP responders. And then the 19th will be the open discussion, uh, that they will have.
Okay, so then if the board is fine, I'm going to amend this for it to run until 5:20, 5:23, 22. Be fine with that, Mike, since you made the motion. Be fine with that, Catherine? Be fine with that, everybody else? Alright, so we're going to just amend that Suzanne, just so you know, so that it ends 5:23, 2022. Alright, uh, any other board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. 13.7, consider approving the offer of employment for a new police officer conditioned on passing physical, psychological and any remaining background checks.
So I'll move for approval.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts-Lightcap. Is there any board discussion? Do you want to touch on this or it's pretty self-explanatory?
I think it's pretty self-explanatory as long as.
And it's in the budget, correct? That we're, we've been budgeted for this. We, we put a moratorium before on hiring.
Yeah, no, this was in the, this is in your 2022 budget. It's, it's, there's no, there was no moratorium this year, so.
Yep, the succession plan that we've always had that we've saved.
This is part of moving towards, if you'll recall, I think it started probably about six years ago now. That we made the decision to add one, add one member to each platoon. And in order to do that, you have to hire four. And so we, we went through a couple of years where we hired and then we took a break and hired a public works person. In addition to that, we had a couple of years that we were a little tight. We didn't hire anybody in either one of those two areas. And so this is hiring the third of the four officers to get the four platoons up to four members each.
Thank you.
Any other board discussion? Alls in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We're going to just go out of order real quick just to finish up the business before this presentation. 13.9, consider approving the fire department's request for reimbursement of funds up to $155,000 for new SCBA equipment. This is part of a match related to a grant for the SCBA equipment. The township budgeted $150,000 as part of the 2022 capital budget. Newtown is contributing up to $110,000. Willstown and Edgemont have contributed $30,000 and $10,000 respectfully. The fire company has requested an additional $45,000 to cover supplemental tanks that were not awarded in the grant. Caiman will be made upon receipt of an invoice from the fire company along with proper documentation of the expenditure.
So move for approval, second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Russo. Is there any board discussion? Do you want to add anything?
I just want to make it clear to the board that we've only budgeted 150 and they're requesting about 5,000 more than what you budgeted. So that's, we're not, staff is not saying you shouldn't move forward. But I just wanted to make sure that I'm being very clear with you what we agreed to.
You got it covered.
We'll, we'll have it covered.
And to the fire company's credit, they did not go to great lengths to express the, uh, the, the, the change up here. They met with Steve and I, um, so just so that's clear. Any other board discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Well, now move to 13.8, discussion about the recommendation from the finance committee to investigate possible options regarding Marple Township's non-payment. To Marple Newtown Joint Leisure Services in prior years. And I believe the chair of the finance committee is here.
I'm Jim Lenzlado, I chair the finance committee for Newtown Township. And, uh, we had a conversation in our last meeting that we thought would be appropriate to bring before you folks. So they're, you're dealing with the joint leisure services group between Marple and Newtown Townships. So it's a contractual agreement that stipulates the contributions from each township into that joint fund. Newtown has met its obligations over the past several years. Marple has not. In the past five years, we've determined, and these numbers are, you know, close but not accurate. That Marple short paid the Marple Newtown Leisure Services Group by nearly $200,000. And in that $200,000, that includes nothing paid in 2019 and significant short payments in 20 and 21. As I said, this is a contractual agreement between the two towns. It is a split based on the number of residents slash children that participate. Again, the calculation is nothing that I have a lot of detail on. But we, we are about, depending on the year between 37 and 40% Newtownis. And Marple is between 16, 63%. My latest calculations is that we've paid our number and they've paid, you know, for example, in 2021, we paid 55,000 and change. They paid 37,000 and change, where their number should have been closer to $70,000. So, uh. My, my role and our role as a team is to, A, identify this and came up in a conversation I said in our last meeting. Identify the, uh, the issue. We have basic data and information that's been provided to us, which identifies that shortfall. Uh, and, and really what I'm here to do is to urge us, the board of supervisors for, um. Newtown Square, Newtown Township to investigate this and take some degree of action on it. There's a lot of different things you can do, we can do as a township about this. But the fundamental finding that we have is that we're holding up our end of the bargain, number one. And number two, more concerning to all of us is that shortfall is not contributing to what we're trying to provide to kids in recreation services. It's pretty simple. And, and you could look at it a number of different ways as to who uses the facilities, how they're used, the programs that are out there. But that money will go a long way that they have not paid in. And it can be in services to the kids, the condition of the building. And particularly the public areas of that building. I've, I've had a lot of kids come through, there are coach teams, my kids have been on teams. The, the facilities are, are, are really poor, the part that the leisure services group funds. It's a, it's a building that's, I guess it's leased from the school district, but there's upkeep and things that leisure services contributes to, like taken care of. That's fallen behind. Richie now and his team have done an exceptional job. Given the shortfall of money that he has and they make it work every year for the kids. But this has got to stop. I mean, it's, it's, again, I don't know the exact pennies that are involved, but when you're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars over a fairly short period of time. To me, that's, that's something that needs to be looked at and determined what we need to do about it.
So I think that there's, I'm sorry, I think that there's, right, correct me if I'm wrong on this. So, so I guess there's kind of two options, right, moving forward with this. One is the theoretical, you know. Going for the money that is, that is outstanding, that we didn't, that leisure services didn't receive for the two. The other one is now that we know that there's this contract, you know, have a better handle on it as we're moving forward in years to come. And have a discussion, um, with our representatives on leisure services if the situation arises again. And whether that's a discussion that leisure services has with the board or if our township manager has a conversation with another township manager. You know, I think, and I, I think that you're probably in the same boat here, we don't want to have a intermunicipal feud.
That's, that's the goal. It's to identify the, first things that there's an issue. Second of all, that there's a contract. And the contract's a bigger issue, I'm sorry about.
And I don't think we ever knew, right, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, this is before my time on here, but we never knew that there was a contract before.
Yeah, it only came, the, the agreement had been in place, but the contract itself, I didn't know about until last week, until Stephen and Rich provided it to me.
Got it. So I, I mean, I'm just, you know, my, my opinion would be on this is that, that's, we kind of go with the latter, right? We kind of folk, now that we know that there's a contract, focus on if the situation arises again, what rights do we have in this contract, if any? Uh, but more importantly, to open up those, I mean, you know, dialogue, a lot more than I guess what would happen in the past. I don't know if there was that much communication between leisure services, uh, the representatives on leisure services and the board. I don't know that for sure, but that's just me from, from what was, was just presented, but I keep cutting you off.
Yeah, so a couple, couple of questions. So what is the, uh, what's the split? What's the contract say?
So the contract was written, I can't, I don't have the exact date in front of me. But the contract was written several, more than several years ago. And it had been amended, I think in the past five years, is that close, Stephen?
My understanding is the contract was written in, I think, 2002, uh, thereabouts. There was supposedly there was an, an addendum done, although we've never seen the addendum. I believe in 2012, 2013 that adjusted it. In 2002, I believe the contract reads that Marple would contribute 60%, we would contribute 40. And then I'm a little fuzzy on what the addendum was supposed to be exactly, but my understanding is it went down to like 57, 43 or something like that.
Okay, alright, that's, that's fair enough to, to start, that's fair enough. So let's assume it's 57, 43 and we can figure that out, but that's it, so that's the numbers. So, uh, 2022. Steve, did we pay our fifty-seven percent contribution at this point?
Well, we're paying the forty-three. My understanding is that we've, I believe with today, we probably had made two contributions. I think tonight there was a contribution on there. I would have to look again. I know typically a fire contribution and a library contribution, I think we also had our leisure services.
What is the total contribution due to Marple?
I, I actually have that. So based on the last five years' calculation, which I think is when that addendum kicked in. It's fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine thousand, which is the Newtown portion of the contribution. And we, and we paid that same amount for five consecutive years. The last data I have is from twenty-twenty-one. I don't have anything from twenty-twenty-two.
So, and we paid on a quarterly basis.
So, so we're due, so our forty-three percent this year is fifty-five thousand, eight forty.
I, I believe that's accurate.
Okay, that's fine. So that means there are fifty-seven percent is, you know, we can.
It, it looks like it's seventy-four thousand and change.
Seventy, okay, seventy-four thousand and change. And we pay it on a monthly basis.
We paid on a quarterly basis.
So we paid, I assume we paid somewhere around twenty-five percent of the fifty-five.
We've either paid twenty-five percent or we may have already paid fifty percent. I, I think tonight, I, I would have to look back. I don't.
Okay, I got it. But we're on, we're on schedule. We, we're in Q two, we're on schedule.
We, we're paying Q two.
And Jim, do you know what, what Marple has paid thus far?
So I don't know anything about twenty-twenty-two, but again, through twenty-twenty-one, the last, in twenty-nineteen, they didn't pay anything.
Right, right, right.
And in twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one, they paid thirty-seven thousand, seventy-eight dollars. Which I believe is half of what they were supposed to pay.
Right, so they, so understand, and, and I think I'm kind of where Leonard is. I don't like what happened in, in nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and I kind of remember this issue and I, you know. I mean, I do remember that the issue came up and, and, and I think we talked to the Marple, to the commissioners and you know, that there were some, some reasons why they couldn't contribute and, you know, we didn't get into a battle then. But, but the point is, I, I, I agree with Leonard. I think what Leonard's saying is this is twenty-twenty-two. And I want to make sure that everybody executes their side of the agreement in twenty-twenty-two. Not, personally, I'm not so much looking to go back into nineteen, twenty and twenty-one and recoup that. But I want to make sure, my goal would be to make sure that Marple pays the seventy-four and change. So I would want to know from Richie now, how much has been paid of the seventy-four up until this point? And then, you know, I'd also want to either have Steve and Leonard or either both or, or one or the other. So Leonard would approach, maybe Steve should approach the township manager there first to make sure that they have the seventy-four budgeted, that they plan to pay it. Find out from Richie now first, how much has been paid, but go to the township manager, say, hey, just verifying, you know, we're, we're in for fifty-five, eight forty-nine. Here's how much we paid so far. Let them know. Let them know how we're going to pay the rest of the fifty-five. Tell them your schedule, how the fifty-five, eight forty-nine will be paid. And find out the same information from him, how much he's paid, what his schedule is to pay the seventy-four. So once you get that information, Steve, if there's not a solid plan to pay the seventy-four, come back to the board, then I would, you know, with I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I, then I would ask our chair to go to the president of the commissioners and have a discussion with him at, at the board level. So that's, that's my idea.
And I, I totally disagree. We carry them through on the school, the school system. We pay the majority of the money there as it is now. We have the least amount of students going. Now we're going to let them slide on this. It's, it's unacceptable. Two hundred thousand dollars they didn't pay.
You're saying in a rear.
I want that money. I want that money. Yeah, we're paying for, I'm, I'm paying for their kids to go to school. Everybody in this town is paying more money in our township and we have less students at that school. It's not fair. We're carrying through on the school system, we're carrying through on leisure system, on leisure services. It's unacceptable. It's unacceptable. It, it, it's a contract. You live up to the contract. I don't care about a war. I don't care about a war. It's a contract. If, if they would, if we were not paying our share, you know they come after us and make us pay. So I, I totally disagree with you two.
No, I mean, that's fair enough. Like, and, and look, Mike, I don't, I don't disagree with what you're saying.
I just think, let's get this, let's get the rest of the information and see where they are this year. But I am one that says they're not paying their share. They owe us money. They should pay out. The building is a dump, okay? The Gauntlet Center is a dump, okay? What?
They owe leisure services money.
No, but he just said they pay for stuff.
Yeah, the, the money goes to leisure services, not to us.
No, no, I understand that, but leisure ser, what I mean is leisure services maintains that portion of the building. The bathrooms are a disaster. The, the facility is a disaster. They could use some refurbishment.
You're, you're saying they can invest that two hundred grand into the building, okay? But can we make that a secondary issue and fix twenty-twenty-two first as a priority and then come back and discuss?
We might not even have to fix it. We just need to see. Steve's going to check in based off of what you said. It's the same thing we do with Willistown with the Bartram Bridge. Just have a conversation, then, you know, and, and.
I mean, report back to the board.
My, my, you know, my wife appreciates that, getting me out on another night, so thanks for that volunteering me to, to have a meeting with.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, based on, I'm saying, based on the feedback. If the feedback's good and we have, and they have a plan, then, then we can move on, then go back to what Mike says, maybe to talk about a rear.
Well, it is. It's, you know, our guys work extremely hard. Rich does an hell of a job with those kids during COVID and everything. And the majority of those kids are, are Marple kids. They're not Newtown kids. And the fact is, if the money could go to improve the facility, to have nicer bathrooms, to improve them, to be more modernized, to modernize the facility. It, it's, it's money well spent, but it's not money we have to spend because it's not in the coffers. And that's not right. They have an agreement. They got to live up to it. And their, their, their people are benefiting, the more of their people are benefiting than our people. A lot of our people go to private schools. They're not in these leagues.
Anything else I can provide you folks?
No, I, I think you, I mean, from my point of view, I think, I think you covered it. Now it's on our side to find out what's happening with at least the, the current payments for twenty-twenty-two, at least get that part.
In addition to informing us, if you can, just let the finance committee know what you discover as well.
No, thanks, Jim.
Thank you for the, for the finance committee. Leonard and I are the liaisons and, and the, the work that you guys do is beyond what I think we expected. So thank you. And please, and please tell the committee that we appreciate the work.
And Mr. Chairman, I will gladly go over and meet with the folks from Marple if you prefer to give you another night at home.
You're too kind. I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Thank you. Alright, so that concludes everything for new business. We're now, now move down to section fourteen, old business, there is nothing. We'll move to section fifteen, resolutions of legislation in action. Fifteen point one, consider approving resolution twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-one. American Rescue Plan Act funds, Supervisor Roberts-Laycap.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the resolution twenty. The American Rescue Plan Act Local Fiscal Recovery Funding Program. Whereas Congress adopted the American Rescue Plan Act, ARF, on March eleventh, twenty-twenty-one. And the U.S. Department of Treasury has established reporting requirements for non-entitlement units of local government NEUs. And whereas Newtown Township, a NEU, has been allocated a total of one million, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and two thousand and eighty-four, and eighty-two cents that is scheduled to be distributed to the township through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. A sum of seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and one dollars and forty-one cents was received in two thousand twenty-one. And the remaining seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and one dollars and forty-one cent is expected in twenty-twenty-two. And whereas under the state and local fiscal recovery funds, slough of criteria, eligible expenses may occur between March three, twenty-twenty-one and December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. And whereas ARF allows ARF and funds to be used for various purposes, including assistance to nonprofits and industries impacted by public health emergency, to respond to workers performing essential work during the public health emergency for the provision of government services to the extent of any reduction in revenue due to public health emergency and to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broad, broadband infrastructure. And whereas the Board of Supervisors of Newtown Township intends to appropriate our, our funds for the provision of stormwater mitigation and improvements to stormwater ma, uh, infrastructure. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Newtown Township has approved this resolution on the ninth day of May, twenty-twenty-two. That's my motion.
Motion is made by Supervisor. Motion is made by Supervisor Roberts-Laycap. Is there a second? Seconded by Supervisor Russo. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Fifteen point two, consider approving resolution twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-two. Formal request for relocation of post office to a larger location within the township to Congresswoman Mary Gay Scanlon. Supervisor Chanlis.
Okay, and this came about in, in response to resident concern that was, was raised last week, so or last meeting, so we're, we're trying to respond to that. Can I get a motion to pass resolution number twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-two? Resolution to formally request Congresswoman Scanlon's assistance in advocating for a larger post office in Newtown Square. And can I just give some background real quickly? I did speak with a member. Okay, whereas several years ago, the Newtown Square Post Office moved from a standalone building on Route two fifty-two to a much smaller storefront space in the Newtown Square Shopping Center. And whereas since that time, due to land development projects approved many years ago, the population of Newtown Township and therefore the number of citizens who utilize this post office has significantly increased. And whereas the most recent census data collected shows that as of twenty-twenty, the population of this township increased from twelve thousand to sixteen to fifteen thousand and two, a twenty-three percent increase, which does not include the expected future growth. And whereas the current storefront space in terms of area for customers from the public to come in for services fits only a few customers, not socially distanced at a time. And whereas oftentimes the line to use the current post office extends well out the door, which is difficult, particularly for elderly or disabled customers in inclement weather. And whereas numerous residents have raised concerns to this board about the lack of space in the Newtown Square Post Office. And whereas this board believes that it would be beneficial for the residents of this township to seek Congresswoman Scanlon's assistance in advocating for the United States Postal Service to identify and obtain a larger space for the Newtown Square Post Office. And whereas Supervisor Chanlis has spoken with a member of Congresswoman Scanlon's office who has indicated a willingness to work with Newtown Township toward this end. And Supervisor Chanlis has spoken with members of the Board of Commissioners of Bradner Township, which has certain residents who also utilize the Newtown Square Post Office regarding assistance with this request as well. And now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Newtown hereby formally requests Congresswoman Scanlon's assistance in advocating for the United States Postal Service to identify and obtain a larger space for the Newtown Square Post Office, resolved this ninth day of May, twenty-twenty-two.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Supervisor Chanlis, seconded by Supervisor Roberts-Laycap. Will now move to board discussion. Supervisor Chanlis.
Yeah, I just want to note that I had spoken with someone from Ms., from Congresswoman Scanlon's office. And she had asked, they, they did sound willing to assist with this. Granted, the U.S. Postal Service is its own entity, but between us and, and Congresswoman Scanlon and Bradner Board of Commissioners, who are also interested in supporting our effort. We're hoping we can get some progress. They did ask for a formal request from us, and so that's why this is being done as a resolution.
They being Mary Gay Scanlon's office, Congresswoman Scanlon's office. I have to commend you, Supervisor Chanlis. This is something that I tried, as we all know, but from my ferocity of my response last week. I tried multiple times to get a response from the Congresswoman's office, to which I failed. And so the old adage of when you want something done, send in a woman. So good job, Supervisor Chanlis. And I think the residents will be very well served by this potential expansion. Any other board discussion?
Yes, Pico substations.
Hold on, real quick, on this motion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Alright, now we'll move down to board comment. Go ahead, Mr. Russo. Just turn your mic front on.
We need to make sure our property management person goes by there. Same junk, same bushes, the same crap. Everything was cleaned out when we did the Greer Park cleanup a few weeks ago, that Ms. Roberts-Laycap and I were at. And it's all the same crap. They don't maintain the property. They just throw stuff there. People throw stuff there and they got to clean it up. They got to have it maintained.
I do believe that they were out this last week, so you're saying it's back again?
I'm not saying I went by there this week, but they got, they got to go, they got to go out there like twice a month minimum and clean the place up and cut the grass and cut the bushes back. Because all those bushes, it's all, it's not even really bushes, but they hold all the trash. And then I think we should, my opinion about the new Delaware County Health Department ruining the possibility of losing some good members or attendees of our farmer's market, I think we should write a strongly worded response to them saying this is unacceptable, that, you know, they're supposed to help us, not hinder us. And, you know, this is something that we've come to learn, you know, last year, you know, the farmer's market, I thought was a great success. And, and if we're going to eliminate three vendors, I mean, we don't have a lot of vendors, so we're eliminating three good vendors. And who, how many others do we not know that we haven't heard from yet that we're going to eliminate? It might not be a farmer's market. And that, and that doesn't matter what, what group you're in. Everybody can benefit from going. So I think, I think we need to, I don't think those people have any idea how to run anything, let alone now that you're going to run a health department and eliminate people that are trying to do something good. It's, that's, that's the way things are going. Like people are trying to get more fresh food, trying to get more fresh, you know, products. And, and, and not everybody is small startup businesswoman. That one business we're eliminating is a girl just out of college. It's, it's running that little business and she's getting eliminated. She doesn't have a commercial kitchen or the access to one because she doesn't make the kind of money to justify that. That's, that's wrong. I think we should write something or maybe next time have a resolution that, however we go on record with them, to strongly oppose the rule.
Yeah, I don't think that, I don't think that's a bad idea. I mean, we can have, we'll discuss it in greater detail and bring it back to the board. To something that's palatable for all of us. Supervisor Partridge.
Yeah. So I moved to Newtown Square about thirty years ago, was the end of nineteen ninety-two. About twenty-nine years ago, I met Joe Kitania when our sons entered first grade at Saint Anastasia's. You know, basically, Joe, Joe grew up in Newtown Square, as, as most people know. You know, he, you know, played ball at the Knell Fields. Participated on the nineteen sixty-seven team that went to the World Series, you know, and, and came in third in the world. Japan won the Little League World Series that year and don't know who came in second, but Team USA came in third. Team, Team USA was you know, the Newtown Edgemont Little League team. Joe, you know, went to Saint Annis and graduated Cardinal Harrow, went on to, you know, to, to get his degree, I believe, from Westchester, the bachelor's and you know, law school at Widener. Joe, throughout his life, served Newtown Township, Newtown Square. He supported, you know, supported the schools, supported Saint Anastasia's, supported the public schools. You know, he was a supporter, obviously from Newtown Edgemont, Little League. He started the, the challenger league, which, you know, was a extension of the, the Little League for, for kids who had, you know, disabilities. He served the community as, as an elected official, you know, as, as a member of this board for for twelve years or, you know, he obviously is our solicitor for, since he, since he left the board. But even more than that, it's the, you know, Joe served the community. He served the people. I mean, his relationships, any, anyone. Most people in Newtown, I guess it's about fourteen thousand residents right now, but, you know, a, any one of those that you meet on the street, you, you mentioned the name Joe Kitania. I mean, most people know who Joe was and, and. I mean, most people know who Joe was and, and there's a significant number of people who Joe helped and served through his, his lifetime. Joe's impact, lifetime impact on, on Newtown is, is, it's not replaceable. I just think that we, the, the board, the, you know, Newtown Township need to do something significant to ensure that Joe's name and the lifetime contributions he may live on, live on, into, well into the future, so. I, I really can't say.
That's, that was well said, and, and, you know, as we have discussed already, there is something in the pipeline that will become public. And, you know, when it's appropriated in the next couple of weeks to months, but that was well said, Supervisor Partridge. Anyone else? Any other board comment? All right, seeing none, we will move to adjourn. Thank you very much.